This work session regular meeting of the Township Council is called to order. Madam Clerk?
In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made as required, indicating that this work session regular meeting would take place at the Municipal Building at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, May 14, 2024.
Thank you. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation by Councilman Karazi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the
Please, please still stand standing. If there is to be peace in the world, there must be peace in the nations. If there is to be peace in the nations, there must be peace in the cities. If there is to be peace in the cities, there must be peace between neighbors. If there is to be peace between neighbors, there must be peace in the home. If there is to be peace in the home, there must be peace in the heart. May peace be in all of your hearts. By the way, this was the closing prayer that we prayed on May 2nd in the 73rd anniversary of National Day of Prayers, and Mayor suggested that we use this in today's invocation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Embarrasson?
Here.
Councilwoman Francois?
Here.
Councilman Karazi?
Here.
Mayor Kramer?
Here.
Councilman Oni Jaka? Deputy Mayor Petasnik? Councilwoman Udine?
Here.
Councilman Vasanella?
Here.
Councilman Wright?
Councilman Oni Jaka is stuck in traffic. He shall be here late, and Councilman Petasnik or Deputy Mayor Petasnik is out of town on business. Commendations and Proclamations. Mental Health Awareness Month. Yep? Yep? Phyllis?
Yes.
Oh. All right.
Thank you all for coming out today. So, this is a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month, which is May, and I will read it as follows. Whereas according to the National Alliance on Mental Health and Mental Illness, one in five or 20% of Americans are living with a diagnosable mental health condition in any given year. And whereas with Franklin Township’s population of more than 68,000 people, this means almost 14,000 of our friends, family, and neighbors are living with a diagnosable mental health condition. Whereas substance use disorders affect more than 23 million Americans, yet only 25% receive treatment of any kind or sort. Whereas navigating through life is challenging for everyone, but even more so for those with mental health, are substance use disorders, physical or intellectual disabilities, are those marginalized based on race, ethnicity, socioeconomics, gender, sexual orientation, or other criteria. Whereas many who live with these challenges also face stigma from their community. And in the face of stigma, it is so hard to ask for or seek out help that is available to improve the lives and health of people. Whereas Franklin Township is committed to educating the public in order to remove these stigmas and informing our residents about finding the services through mental health and substance use programs delivered by Somerset County, by Richard Hall Community Health and Wellness Center, and numerous valuable nonprofit partners. Now therefore, our mayor and the township of Franklin, County of Somerset, on behalf of the Township Council, do hereby reaffirm that Franklin Township is a stigma-free community. We proclaim the month of May, 2024, to be Mental Health Awareness Month and urge all of our residents, organizations, schools, public safety, and businesses to join us in taking the stigma-free pledge and live every day stigma-free. Now, we have our stigma-free group here. Mr. Mayor, you have something you want to say?
Good evening, everyone. You probably wonder why these youths are here, and Nelson Mandela once said, and I just want to read a quotation from him, he said, “The young of today are the leaders of tomorrow.” While this may seem to be a simple truth, it is so important for the future of our community, state, nation, and world as we nurture, support, and recognize our youth leaders. With this in mind, we have commendation to recognize our youth leaders, and I’d like to read it. By the mayor and council of Township of Franklin, we, Philip Kramer, Mayor, and Alex Karazi, Councilmen of the Township of Franklin, in the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey, on behalf of the Township Council, and all citizens of the Township of Franklin, hereby extend our appreciation and commendation to the youth leaders gathered here tonight for their passion, commitment, and service to our residents in raising mental health awareness. They felt, witnessed, and perceived the urgency to help other teens and adults who struggle with mental health issues, substance use disorder, or the stigma that holds people from seeking help. They joined together to be event organizers, project managers, educators, advocates, and in one case, a grant writer, in order to pursue their goals. Congratulations.
Hello. My name is Phyllis Beals, and I’m co-chair with Safi Callen of the newly-formed Franklin Township Stigma-Free Council, to which everyone is welcome. I want to share with you some examples and explain why were these teens, and actually there are another about 25 or 30 who couldn’t be here tonight because they are working or they have other commitments. So, for example, at Franklin High School, the Black Family Wellness Expo took place in March, at which strategies on getting through mental health trauma were presented through spoken word and dance and panel discussions. This was sponsored by the Franklin High School Black Youth Awareness Club and the Raritan Valley Chapter of the Links. And I understand that students from there are going to speak in Plainfield soon again about mental health awareness. St. Matthias’s Self-Care Fair, also in March, was led by Smile With Braces, Core Youth Leadership Team, where resources were shared, stigma was challenged, and breakout sessions about eating disorders and more took place throughout the day. Smile With Braces stands for St. Matthias Youth Living Evangelization, Bringing and Raising Awareness to Combat Existing Stigmas. That’s really, it’s a big, it’s a big concept there, and it tricks you, Smile With Braces, right? Mental health and stress management techniques at Thomas Edison Energy Smart Charter School and the Franklin Township Youth Center, through a grant from America’s Promise: Power of Youth Challenge, mental health awareness took place, two events, one at a class last spring where a police officer spoke, and the young student sought this grant of his own accord, and then there was another event at the youth center. Because there were going to be so many people here today, I was hoping, but we’re very happy, thank you, thank you to those who did come. We don’t, we’re not reading all the names at this time, but everyone is receiving a certificate. Safi would like to say a couple words about stigma-free.
Hello. Good evening. Evening. My name is Safi Callen. I’m the Special Projects Manager for the Township of Franklin. I just want to do a brief commercial about stigma-free so you understand what you’ve been hearing about all of this time. In February, under the umbrella of the Mayor’s Wellness Campaign, the Township of Franklin launched the Stigma-Free Council, and that council helps to remove stigma for mental health, helps to remove stigma for substance use disorder, because we want people to understand that you should seek help if you need help. If you broke your leg, if you broke your arm, you would go to a doctor and you would get the help that you needed, and the same should hold true for substance use disorder. The same should hold true for mental health crises, because mental health is whole-body health. So, we have had three meetings, as you heard me say, we first started meeting in February. We’ve had three meetings, and I’m just going to read you a short list of what we’ve done in that time. So, since February, and in no particular order, we have hosted a stigma-free table at the St. Matthias Self-Care Fair, hosted a stigma-free table at the Franklin Middle School Diversity Night Festival. We’ve partnered with the Franklin Township Forever 55 Program to present Relaxing Instrument Meditation, an event for, in April, for Stress Awareness Month. Our members have gone to the April Franklin Township Board of Education meeting in an effort to have Franklin Township Public Schools become stigma-free and pledge to be a stigma-free community. We’ve received a donation from the Franklin Women’s Club. We’ve spoken at the Mayor’s Wellness Campaign Town Hall Meeting, hosted by New Jersey Quality Healthcare Institute. We’ve applied for a $60,000 grant, keep your fingers crossed, with the congressionally-directed spending office with Senator Cory Booker’s office. As you heard, May is Mental Health Month, so we have partnered with Mental Health Association in New Jersey and the Mental Health America to include Franklin’s Performance gazebo in their Light It Up Green campaign. So, if you came in and it was starting to get dark, and when you leave later, you’ll notice that that warm green glow emanating from the gazebo is for mental health awareness. We have two full-day mental health first aid workshops coming up on June 10th, and that is Adults Helping Other Adults Through Crises, and on September 30th, and that’s Adults Helping Youth. We have presented at the New Jersey Governor’s Council on Mental Health Stigma, and just so you know, May 16th is Mental Health Action Day, so please be seen in green. So, if any of that is of interest to you, if Equitable Health in Franklin is of interest to you, or if you just are like, “These ladies look tired, so I’m going to help them out by joining,” please join the Stigma-Free Council. Our next meeting is tomorrow. It is the third Wednesday of each month. Thank you.
It’s affected my family, and for the people who did best with it were people who were not stigmatized by what was happening. Mental health or mental illness is not something to be ashamed of. It is an illness, just like a liver problem, or a leg problem, or anything else. I see it every day in my clinic. I saw it today in my clinic. And the people who can do it without stigma are the ones who are a step ahead. So, please, regardless of what you do, please remain stigma-free yourself. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Team Thomas Edison Energy Smart Charter School, state champions
Greetings, everyone. This is a really nice commemoration. We don’t do this as often as I wish we did for our kids, so to recognize them is always a privilege, and I’m honored to do it. We are recognizing our students in Teaks Thomas Edison Charter School. Today, what they did is they innovated robotics team representing Franklin Township in a world competition in Texas, and they won with third place. So, if you’re part of the 10 kids, absolutely. So, if you’re part of the 10 kids, please come up. And the two coaches? Are you two there coaching? Okay. Are you the coach? Third place in Jersey, yes. Okay. We, Philip Kramer, Mayor, and Shipe Udine, Councilwomen of the Franklin Township, of the Township of Franklin, and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey, on behalf of the Township Council and all citizens of the Township of Franklin, hereby recognize the 10 students and two coaches, and commend the exemplary dedication and hard work and innovative spirit demonstrated by the Team 11754 Energy Smart and Thomas Edison Energy Smart Charter School, and celebrate their winning four out of 10 games at the 2024 First Championship in Houston at the World Competition. We extend our best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors and pledge our ongoing support to the Thomas Edison Energy Smart Charter and School FTC Robotics Team. We are so proud of you, and you know, if there are other students in Franklin Township that are doing such amazing things, we would love to recognize them. So, please let us know. You can reach out to any of the council members, and we would love to recognize them, because it’s really important to showcase our talents, and these are examples. So, thank you. And once again, I know we have two coaches, if you guys want to come up and say a few things.
Yeah. As a coach, we always let them to talk and take the lead, what they are doing, so we can, I can introduce Chris. So, he’s our captain, so he can take some word.
Hello. My name is Chris. I’m the co-captain and lead programmer at our team. What we do at robotics is, you know, we kind of exemplify a mini-work environment in building this kind of mini-robot that uses a lot of engineering and programming skills, but also really emphasizes how we work together as a team. You know, we really value education, and this year especially, you know, it’s not about just like educating ourselves, but educating each other, you know? Even if I’m senior to my other team members, I want to make sure that I’m learning from them, and then they’re learning from me, which is a theme that we can use in our lives as well. So, I think, you know, robotics in general just displays a theme that we kind of see so common, and it exemplifies our teamwork skills together, and most importantly, education. Thank you.
I’m jealous they didn’t have it when I was going to school. I was once asked if I didn’t become a doctor, what would I have done, and my answer was robotics. It’s an amazing field. It’s amazing that at high school level, that our children are being able to do this. Congratulations, and you’ve done it very well. Okay, so if you want to follow along the agenda, there are copies near the clerk at the corner of the counter. We are on to item number six, public discussion, to have a motion open to the public.
Some moved.
Second. Moved in second at all. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We will open to the public. Let me know if what I’m about to do I can’t do. But I see a lot of people here, and my guess is a lot of you are together. How many people are intending to speak? Okay, not, not that many. So, if all of you wanted to speak, I would have had to shorten the time. The rest of you are here for support. That’s great. So, anyone wishing to speak should come, hello, Mrs. Peterson. Anyone wishing to speak may come to the podium. Five minutes per person, limited to one, you may only come up one time, no yielding of time. Please state your name and address when you come up.
Mrs. Peterson? Lake Avenue in Somerset.
Let me interrupt you one second. Could people close those doors so we don’t have this sound? Thank you. I appreciate it. Go ahead, start the time over again, please.
Mrs. Peterson? 12 Lake Avenue in Somerset. I’m here representing residents from Lake, Hill, and Spring. We are having a real problem with idling, idling all night of trucks that are now parked in a residential zone. Trucks that should be moved, trucks that sometimes just stay there all the time. The township has many ordinances. We want to know when they’re going to be enforced, and we’re recommending no idling signs placed on the corner somewhere of Spring, Hill, and Lake, both in Spanish and English, to remind people there is a state law. Number two, we’re also recommending that somebody be hired as an idle enforcer, someone who can see the ordinances, know what they are, and can take and so bring that back to the council and the people of the planning board, as well as the individuals, the mayor, et cetera. It’s very annoying to be awakened 12:00, 2:00 to 3:00, 4:00 to 5:00 o’clock in the morning with trucks that sit and idle for an hour or more. They’ve idled even as long as five to six hours. It’s not just the noise that is disturbing, it is also the fumes. And when they’re idling, we have in our closed house, have had air quality detector monitoring, CO levels of 840, CO2 levels of 2,330, and trivac levels of .925, with other times as high as 12. It’s hard to breathe, you wake up coughing, you can’t open the windows because it’s as bad outside as it is. So, if you could please address this. I’ve talked to the police department. I’ve only had to personally call them once when a group next to me had a party starting at 8:00, less, and around 15 feet from my house with loud music, and they did come, told me they weren’t coming until after 9:30, because that was the decision that was made before they would enforce. I have been told numerous times by a neighbor that I am the one calling the police all the time. I have been threatened, and I had a Township Planning Board person with me looking at the spills of oil from the trucks near the corner of the storm drain. When around the corner came a red truck barreling at us, I told the person with me, I will not give his name, to move fast, or he would have hit him and possibly me. He ended up hitting the curb just inches away from both of us. I think it’s time that we enforce the ordinances, if for nothing else, think of our children and the people in the future. Oil going down the storm drain where your water comes from is not a good idea. Trucks idling all night with fumes and CO2, high levels that make you sick, nauseous, give you headaches, is not a good idea either. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Samina Satar. I live at 18 Barbary Court, Franklin Township. I’ve lived here for over a decade with my family. I’m here today to ask the council to be a voice of moral clarity that can start to heal the divides among us in this country, but also here in Franklin. Many of us in this room seek a resolution from the council, a voice to tip the balance of perspectives on the conflict in the Middle East, to say that the death of innocent women and children is not okay. And we, as a community, need the violence to end so that we can begin to heal the cracks in our community fabric. We are incredibly polarized right now, with protests and counter-protests and petitions and counter-petitions. People look at their neighbors in a different way, not knowing if someone is with us or against us. There are signs around our township that say, “Bring the hostages home,” but they don’t realize that we too want the hostages returned. We want the Israeli men and women and children who are held hostage in Gaza to go home. We want the Palestinian men, women, and children who are held hostage in Israel to go home. We want diplomatic solutions to this conflict, not more bombs and bullets and blockades and starvation as a weapon. That doesn’t make anyone safer. We’re saying the same thing that thousands of protesters in Israel are voicing too. And we hope that Franklin can be a voice for peace, that will be heard in this state, to recognize the humanity of those that are suffering on both sides, and play a small part in a movement toward the end of this war. I think many of us remember being in history class and thinking, “If only people had spoken up earlier. If only someone had done something to stand up to those in power, maybe more lives could have been saved.” Let’s not repeat the same mistakes of our past. Thank you.
Go ahead. Those under 18 may only need to state their name, their first name. They don’t have to state their last name or address. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Fatima Albana, and I’m a freshman in high school. I’m coming to speak to you today and urge you to recognize and acknowledge the suffering of Franklin residents. of Franklin residents and your constituents who are deeply affected by the death of innocent women and children, which is in large part funded by our government. We're witnessing the indiscriminate and intentional killing of Palestinian civilians, most of them women and children, in real time, and there is no escaping it. We call on you, our elected council members, to recognize this moment of great difficulty for your constituents and find courage to call for justice. The situation in Gaza affects us personally. A local surgeon and family friend closed his practice to go volunteer in Gaza to assist with life-saving surgeries of the wounded and currently does not have safe passage home due to the Israeli blockade at the border crossing. Dr. Hamawi, a U.S. Army veteran, said that he has performed more traumatic amputations, especially on children in the past two weeks, than in all of his career. A call to stop this suffering and death and to stop the killing isn't about taking sides. In fact, thousands of Israelis have protested in the streets against the course of the war. Just a few days ago, the parents of over 900 Israeli soldiers wrote a joint statement urging against the dangers of war escalation in Rafah. A call to stop this humanitarian catastrophe and urge for safety, dignity, and equality demonstrates an awareness that can unite Franklin neighbors. I believe it is everyone's duty to condemn the killing of innocent lives and condemn the depraved idea that one must kill women and children to restore peace. President John F. Kennedy famously said, there's a picture of him right there, "One person can make a difference and everyone should try."
Good evening, Mayor Kramer, distinguished council members. My name is Rashim Malik and I reside on 21 Woodfield Court. I've been a resident of Franklin for 20 years. My children have benefited from Franklin's school system and graduated from Rutgers. Franklin takes pride in being the most diverse township, and I'm honored to call this community my home. Here are people from various backgrounds who exist harmoniously, showing mutual respect for one another. Surrounded by churches, synagogues, Hindu temples, and mosques, I am part of a community that embraces diversity. Throughout the year, I have actively participated in interfaith dialogues and attended religious and community events that unite our diverse community. I take pride in inclusivity and unity that defines Franklin. For the past few months, the people all over town have been deeply affected by ongoing tragedy in Palestine. The mental and emotional toll has been unprecedented, leaving many of us hurting. While I don't need to delve into details, it's important to acknowledge that virtually everyone knows someone impacted by these events. Personally, I have witnessed families within our township grappling with loss of multiple loved ones. Our conscience compels us to take action. We can no longer stand idly by as this genocide persists. For the sake of humanity and to align ourselves with the right side of history, I implore each of our elected officials to join the call for an immediate end of this atrocity. I appreciate the peace resolution passed last year, but with over 100,000 innocent lives lost and countless others injured, we must escalate our efforts. Consider the profound impact of this violence on our youth who witnessed the horrors of this genocide on social media, risking lasting damage to their mental well-being. Let's initiate an open dialogue to rebuild bridges between our Jewish and Muslim communities through peace, love, and deeper understanding we can heal. While it's not an easy task, our community has waited long enough. It's time for a resolution demanding an immediate end to a genocide, starting at the local level, as many other towns in New Jersey have done. I urge my elected officials to stand up for all. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Kamrul Nasir. I live in 202 Driscoll Court, and I have been a resident of Franklin Township for over 17 years. I'm here today to appeal to you, Mayor, and my council members, raising your voice to ask for a ceasefire for the hostilities happening across the world in Gaza. Even though this is happening a world apart, we are impacted. Our kids are impacted, especially with the role our country plays in this war. This seven-month-old war has no end in sight. So far, more than 35,000 people have lost their lives, including 15,000 kids. That probably is a large share of our Franklin School District. Many are still believed to be under the rubble. 50% of Gaza building structures are destroyed beyond repair. Almost all universities are either totally destroyed or damaged, and the suffering there still continues. The war is leaving a mark on all of us, especially our kids. The images they see on their social media are affecting them mentally. Living in a country like USA, they expect a safe environment and certain protection for kids. Yet when they see kids die in horrible condition, losing their parents, they don't know how to react. My eight-year-old told me the other day, "Daddy, I don't want you to die before me." I know this is normal. I'm gonna die before him, but I know where he's coming from. What happened on October 7th was horrific, but there is no justification to the disproportionate atrocities that have followed. Thousands of lives are lost in front of our own eyes, kids dying, losing their limbs, getting maimed for life. War happens between the parties, but rest of us have a responsibility to contain it so it does not cross our moral boundaries, boundaries of international laws, basic human rights. Let us not make this normal, otherwise eventually we will all be in peril. One might ask, what this resolution from a small town in the corner of New Jersey would do? It may or may not do much, but it would do, it would at least serve our conscience and tell our kids, our next generation, that we tried to do something, whatever was in our power.
My name is Donna Sozio. I live at 2 Shepherd Street, Unit 104, in Franklin Township. And I'm a member and a proud member of the Stigma Free Council. I really don't know how much this means to people such as myself. I have to thank you from the bottom of my heart because I know that this was a courageous thing to do on your, on your, on your, on your part. They have given me the courage to tell my story, and it wasn't a pretty one, in front of the Board of Education. And they let me take my time and tell the story, and they were so encouraging, so validating. And one of them saw me tonight and they said hello, and I was so surprised because who really wants to be friendly to someone who has mental health issues? I'm not used to that. I'm not used to the validation. And to finally be able to have it and to not think of yourself as being worthless and to think that you have something to contribute to your society, that's amazing. It really is amazing. And all of you, you really don't know how much you've changed my life by making this decision and by allowing Safi, who, she is absolutely wonderful, and to be able to not have judgment and to feel safe and secure, that is something that I haven't had in my life. You know, when I was growing up as a child, I wanted to end my life. My father would not allow me to get the help that I needed because of the stigma associated with mental health issues. And I suffered, and it was so wonderful to see these young kids that are advocating for those that have mental health issues and have substance disorders. I mean, this was unheard of in my time. And for me, I finally feel like I have a community. I finally feel as though I, I'm being seen and I'm being heard, and that's just, that's a novelty for me. And I know that the Stigma Free Council isn't going to resolve all the issues at once. I know it's going to be an uphill battle, but just to be a part of something and to have my sister write on Facebook that she's proud of me for wanting to make a difference in regards to the mental health issues that I have and that others have, she's never, she's never said that to me. I mean, here again, it's a first. And while you may not think of it as anything, for those that have a mental health condition or those that have a substance disorder, that validation gives you credibility. It gives you the hope that you need. This is why I'm in green, not because it's Mental Health Month, but because you and the Stigma Free Council have given me hope that I'm not just existing, that I don't have to feel like I'm not anyone. I, I'm not the greatest orator, and I know, I have to, I have to just tell you that I thank you. And I know that my five minutes is almost up, I know that I'm very well aware of the time, but it's just, what you've done just means the world to me. It's given me hope, and I can't express that enough. To be able to say that I live in a community that is nonjudgmental, that's not typical. I mean, I just turned 67 years old, and this is the first time that I can say that I have a home, I have a community that is supportive of me, me who has a mental health condition. I'm, I found that I'm no different than any of you. You have made that possible for me. You and Safi and Phyllis and all of those other people, you've made that possible. You've made me want to live, and that is empowering. And you gave, you've given me the courage to speak tonight, all of you. And again, I just, you've given me a gift, so thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Reverend Sonya Rad. I live at 23 Mustang Trail, Somerset, New Jersey. I've lived here for 27 and a half years. I stand before you today on behalf of the Franklin Township Interfaith Council, where I have the blessing of serving as its newest president. And I'm standing here with regards to the topic that has been talked about much tonight, the situation in the Middle East. The Franklin Township Interfaith Council did write a press release, and I'll read that press release, and this we sent out quite a while ago, but I want to read it because I think it's important. Franklin Township Interfaith Council's position on the, on the current Israeli and Palestinian conflict. Here in Franklin Township, we are blessed to live in a very diverse community with different ethnicities, races, and religious groups. However, many of our friends and families in this community have been affected by the October 7th attack by Hamas on Israel and the subsequent war and killing of thousands of Palestinians in Gaza. The Franklin Township Interfaith Council would like our national leaders and leaders around the world to call for an immediate ceasefire, release of all persons unjustly held in captivity on both sides, and begin working on a permanent, meaningful, and just solution for peace in the region. Our hearts and prayers go out to all families that have been impacted by these horrific events. As tragic as it is, we can not allow it to divide us here in Franklin Township. We can't allow it to destroy the relationships we have built in our community. We stand with, with you. When I say with you, I'm talking about everyone who might be affected by this situation that's going on. We stand with you realizing that we are stronger together and must continue working to maintain unity and peace within our community. The Franklin Township Interfaith Council will continue to pray for a world where coexistence and peace are attainable. We believe here in Franklin Township, we, I love this community. I lived in a different community previously, but I wanted, I always wanted to live here because I liked what I saw. And I think we have to do something in this township to heal the divide that seems to be creeping in because of the events that are happening around the world. We have to do whatever it takes to bring about unity in this community and stand as a shining example. And I'm hoping that this, this, this council will put forth, well, yes, as someone earlier said, have the courage to call for peace, encourage our leaders, our political leaders, to strive for peace in the Middle East. When 35,000 people have been murdered, killed, we know it's war, but you have women and children that are dying in great number. We cannot be silent. We have to think about humanity. God made all of us equal, and He loves all of us. And to continue this, to just sit by and watch it happen and not stand up and speak out, is just not moral. It's not God-like at all. So I'm encouraging this council to please do whatever is in your power to do to help bring about peace in this community and also call for the ceasefire in the Middle East.
Respect to council members, my name is Ayman, and I am a high school student in Franklin Township. I am not going to start my speech out with a statistic that not only, that is not only increasing with the time going on, a statistic that no matter how many times it's said, how many times it's written in banners, bracelets, graduation caps, never gets a second thought. Why it never gets a second thought? Because it's an ever true statistic that is threatening to open doors to the real discussion of what's happening in Gaza. The genocide in Gaza has killed and maimed tens of thousands of kids so far, and just as many are orphaned. Gaza is not only a problem that has nothing to do with us, us privileged individuals who get to sit in this facility without the fear of an attack that could end our lives. Council members, we are living in a time famously known from this movie series, The Hunger Games. The Palestinians are facing starvation, which is intentionally brought on by the oppressors, claiming to be the victims from the same oppression they had suffered on another continent we know as Europe many decades ago. Medical aid is being withheld from the same kids who are being bombed, killed, and maimed. Kids are being amputated with anesthesia. The people in Gaza are fighting for their lives to survive for their children and promise them a world where there isn't buildings falling from attacks. Yet across the Atlantic waters, you have people who can, who can help the parents keep their promises, help stop these children from living in such devastating, such a devastating world, frot their riches and brands that they are wearing to a pointless event to others. Members, tell me if this is not the sign of a Hunger Games. Council members, let us aim to be the mockingjay to this world, to the Palestinians. In regards to our safety here in Franklin, I feel very vulnerable knowing that there are Americans among us that have served in the IDF and killed children, and they walk free among us and around us, knowing very well that this very person could possibly be killing kids as an IDF soldier in Gaza, and our laws in America allow a person to walk free amongst us. Last Wednesday, my mom, dad, and I were dropping off a package at our local UPS store, and we encouraged and we encountered a frightening situation. My mother, who wears a religious head covering or a hijab, entered the store while a male customer exited the store where he targeted us, striking our vehicle with his fists in attempt to intimidate and threaten us. At that moment, I was stunned and confused by what had just happened. The realization of the situation left me petrified. The realization of the situation left me petrified, considering what could have unfolded if my dad and I hadn't been with her and had targeted her directly. Why is it when I go to school, I have to deal with the words terrorist getting thrown around lightly just because I am Muslim? Why is it whenever I go out in public with a hijab, I have to watch my back and close my ears? Why is it when I, any Muslim goes out, goes out and gets paraded about being a terrorist when it's actually the other way around? Do you not say that we as a community in Franklin Township have nothing to do with the genocide? It is concerning and honestly disappointing that the people in authority and our schools are trying to shed down advocacy for such a disaster that clubs at my own high school are getting threatened to shut down permanently just so we can help send aid. When people want to support a good cause and a genuine cause, why are we getting the blame and getting targeted with threats? I urge the council members to come together and pass a non-political humanitarian statement calling for an immediate ceasefire to end hostility from both sides. Council members, remember, a statistic can remain a statistic, but we can stop it from increasing together. Thank you.
My name is Sammy Kadovic. I've been a resident here in Franklin Park for nearly twenty years, New Jersey lifelong resident. I'm also the executive director of the New Brunswick Islamic Center, which is one of the largest Islamic centers in this area, and many of our constituents are also from Franklin Park as well. I'm originally from Bosnia. My father escaped the genocide of World War II against the Bosnian people, in which two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand Bosnians, Muslims, were killed by a Serbian ethno-nationalist extremist militias. As we all know, and maybe some of the younger generation doesn't know, but as you all know, in the nineties, this vile ideology raised its head again, and we saw what transpired at that time in Bosnia. When I, when that occurred, I was in high school in Tinekaj, and how refreshing it was as someone who was going through the evening reports and watching my father age before my eyes, seeing what transpired to his family happening again, every night watching on the news. It wasn't the twenty-four-hour news cycle at that time, it was the evening news cycle. And I was able to express these concerns and feelings I had in my high school class. Tinek prided itself on the first school, one of the first high schools in the nation that had a genocide and Holocaust center. And so we were able to learn, what we were learning in that center, Mr. Shupeck, I remember specifically, and Mrs. Twombly, my English teacher, what we learned there, we were seeing on the current events taking place, and we're able to draw parallels that we can understand what dehumanization does, how it can lead to violence, and we were able to analyze it and understand it as such. Because our school and our nation understood what was taking place in Bosnia at that time. And I'm looking at the situation today. The situation today is there are elements and centers of power that fail to see what is going on and transpiring, somehow ignoring the same genocidal language that Milosevic and Karadich and Maladich, who were all brought up on war crimes and died as war criminals. The same language literally is being spoken by those in that foreign nation. That same language is actually being spoken in Congress by some of our representatives, genocidal language and dehumanizing language. There's a problem. Because I think about my son, whose grandmother is Palestinian, my mother-in-law's Palestinian, that he has to go through school now and doesn't have that comfort and security that I was able least to have, to be able to express myself in school about what was going on in our home. Because he's seeing the images of his ancestral homeland from his mother's side, and then he's seeing these statements and remarks of cheering by those in Congress and in the White House. What is that saying? I know some of you may be asking, what does this have to do with us? We can't solve the problem in Gaza. That is true. Your ceasefire is not going to make an impact on resolving the problem. That is true. They say all politics is local, though. It begins somewhere. It begins somewhere. That we can make a stand, that we will not tolerate this type of behavior, and that message will at least translate to this community, that this is not acceptable. When Bibi Netanyahu claims he is controlling us and our morality and what our First Amendment means and what our freedom of religion means, which he does, we say, no, you don't. We are American. We define who we are and what our constitution means and what genocide means and what ceasefire means and what tragedy means. We're not going to let you define us. But if we stay silent and we don't speak out, then the genocidal language we're hearing in Congress by many of our representatives will be translated down. Will be translated down. So at least at some local level, let's make a statement that this is unacceptable. And if we were in those positions of power, we can teach our children that we would make that decision calling for a ceasefire where it does matter in those other places. I thank you for your time and your consideration. God bless you all. Have a good evening.
Good evening, dear mayor, respected council members. My name is Shemel Malik. I live on Timber Hill Drive, resident of Franklin Township, thirty-four years. Went to Kingston, Franklin Park School, Sampson G. Smith, Hillcrest, class of nineteen ninety-nine, Franklin High School. And now I'm currently raising my three kids here. Yes, there are a number of conflicts that are happening around the world. Why this particular singular conflict matters is because our tax dollars are funding the bombs that are dropping on these women and children, millions of people that have been evacuated to a small portion of land, and now they're calling for a final solution. And if we do nothing, then we are indeed complicit in this genocide. I'm speaking to you today with a deep sense of urgency and a heavy heart to demand that you take a public stance against the ongoing genocide in Gaza. The situation has reached a critical point with the death toll rising alarmingly every single day. According to recent reports, thousands of civilians, over fifty thousand, many that are still under the rubble that we have not recovered, have lost their lives, entire family trees have been wiped out. As my friend Sammy Shaban will tell you, hospitals have been destroyed, there's not a single hospital left in Gaza, mosques have been destroyed, and fifty percent of these are women and children. We have doctors from this community that have gone and come back firsthand experience to talk about the horrific atrocities that are taking place there every single day, and a few that are being held up right now, that will be on world news tonight, ABC, if you want to look for Dr. Hashem Hamawi. As representatives of our community, it's your moral duty to stand against such atrocities and advocate for peace. Silence in the face of such human suffering is not an option. It is complicity. It is imperative that Franklin Township join the global call for an immediate ceasefire and a sustainable path to peace. Others have done it, you wouldn't be the first. Weehawken has done it, North Bergen has done it. We would be the first in central Jersey, however. And now it's time for Franklin Township to lead by example and cast the stone into the pond and create a ripple effect for other cities and towns to follow and to unequivocally say, not on our watch. Which, by the way, when I was in eighth grade here in Sampson G. Smith School, we had to get a permission slip signed to watch Schindler's List, and I remember that. Our teacher was a Jewish lady, and at the end of it, every single one of us understood the moral of the story, not on our watch, not again. And so we demand that you pass a resolution calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Support humanitarian aid efforts to assist those that have been affected by the conflict and advocate for diplomatic solutions and support initiatives that aim to bring lasting peace to the region. The people of Gaza and Palestine deserve to live in peace and dignity, as do the people of Israel. Violence only begets violence. Free from fear and violence, your voice can make a difference. Please stand with us in calling for an end to this genocide and for a peaceful resolution. You are our elected leaders, and now is the time for you to lead with strength, justice, and morality. Thank you.
My name is Amina Andha, and I live on Value Wood Drive. My family has lived here in Somerset for the past fourteen years, and I go to high school here in Somerset. In the past few years living in Franklin, I've peacefully coexisted with many different people of different religions. Across my street is a road called Interfaith Drive, where temples, churches, synagogues, and other religious buildings peacefully coexist. If Franklin can have such a vast diversity of people peacefully living together, I'm confidently able to say that this can happen anywhere across the world. I'm here today to urge my fellow Franklin Council chairs to stand for justice and advocate for the thousands of Palestinians whose voices are stripped away. The recent violence in Palestine not only affects families in Gaza and the West Bank, but echoes across the globe, including here in Somerset. As a teenage girl living here, it pains me to see a conflict on both sides, because we want the Israelis that are held hostage to be released, along with, of course, the Palestinians. They are living in inhumane conditions deprived of basic rights and freedoms. This is not a war of religion or conflict, but simply an inhumane war taking place before our eyes. It has affected many in ways that I cannot even stand to imagine. While I go about my daily activities, they are denied access to even the most basic necessities. We must stand together to end this injustice and ensure a better future for all. We encourage you to call for an immediate ceasefire and advocate for those Palestinians. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ali, and I'm a resident of Franklin, and I attend high school here. Today, I want to talk something that has been on my mind for a long time and is coming straight from the heart. As a teenage boy living in the United States, I've, as a teenage boy living in the United States, the crisis in Palestine, even though it's thousands of miles away, it touches my heart deeply. And as I live my daily life, going to school, spending time with friends, and even thinking about my future, colleges, I can't ignore the fact that across the world, innocent people are suffering. And the news and images that I see online and on social media, which is accessible to like everyone, reminds me that the violence and injustice that the Palestinian people are facing is unfair for everyone. This isn't just a distant issue for me, and as a Muslim teenager, I feel a strong connection to the people of Palestine. Their pain feels like my own, their fight for freedom feels like my own, and their dignity reflects my own hopes and dreams. But even in the darkness, there's hope, hope and resilience of Palestinians who keep resisting and hope in the global support for the cause, and hope that one day, peace will come and everyone will live in freedom and dignity. So today, I ask you, council, I ask you to join me in supporting the people of Palestine and amplifying their voices, supporting their struggles, and working for the future where no one lives in fear or oppression. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, mayor. I should appropriately say friends to most of you here. My name's Sammy Shaban, Twenty-Eight Woodfield Court. I am, I'm the vice president of the Board of Education. I am on the Franklin Planning Board, I am on the Somerset Planning Board, I am on the JFK Democratic Foundation, I'm also one of the founders for the Franklin Food, Security, and Safety Coalition. I also sit on the Martin Luther King Foundation. I'm going to get to why I mentioned all of these soon, but I want to start with a quote from MLK. "We will not remember the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." I feel like I've given so much of my life to Franklin willingly, because I see in Franklin something different than I see anywhere else. I see the second most diverse town in New Jersey, I see a place where I can call home, I see a place where my cousin Mahmoud, if he were alive, would have thrived and been on every one of the boards that I was on, that my cousin Aman, who was killed when she was eight years old, would have enjoyed our school district, a school district that houses over seven thousand kids, a school district that would have been completely slaughtered twice over in Gaza. Let's not be mistaken that what's going on over there does not have impact over here. I remember as a young boy, ten years old, going over to Palestine and being strip-searched naked. I remember the feeling of the cold metal detector against my skin as I sat there shivering naked and watching all the other people walk right past me, all the other people who had a lighter skin tone, all the other people who had American passports but were just different than me. And as they rubbed that metal detector up and down my body, I realized they were looking for something wrong inside of me, something afoul, something not right. I realized what that wrong thing was, was I was Palestinian. The fact that I existed was a problem. The reason why I participate in so many things in this town, including the Board of Education, is to stand up for people like me, for people that have been treated the way that I was treated. I will be the first one to stand up for any brown, black kid, any disparaged kid. Our sister here who spoke earlier and said she was validated at the Board of Education, she must have spoke for fifteen minutes, and we couldn't get more. We wanted her to keep going. We wanted to validate her feelings, because that's what we are, we're Franklin. My son, who's sitting here in the back row, he's a senior in high school, at the beginning of all of this, one of his classmates sent a picture of Hitler. The picture had a flag in the colors of the Palestinian flag, and the mustache was actually "La ilaha illallah, muhammed rasulullah," meaning there's no God but God, and Muhammad is his messenger, the central tenet of the Muslim faith. This was sent to my son right here in Franklin. My mother was just released from the hospital on Friday. This is the third time she's been to the hospital in the past three weeks. Her body is literally failing her from the pressure of what's going on there here. By us staying silent, we are basically saying, that's okay. There's no problem here. Business as usual, we have precedents to uphold. I want all my black and brown brothers and sisters on this panel to see yourself through our eyes. You've suffered in the same way we have. You've suffered the same annihilation of your people. You've been told you're not human. In a famous Supreme Court case, Plessy v. Ferguson in the eighteen nineties, a man was one-sixteenth black, and that was too black to ride on the train. We've suffered that here, but it was people standing up that made change happen. I believe in Franklin, we are different. And I believe that what drives me to keep working in this town for all the different organizations that I work for is because we are different. We set precedents here. We don't follow other people. We should have been the first ones to call for this, not the last ones. And we still have a chance to be amongst those that are calling for it. My good friend, Dr. Hamawi, is still over there. If you don't mind, can I get another minute to finish my thought?
You're on the BOE. I do allow more time for elected officials.
Thank you, mayor. My good friend, Dr. Hashem Hamawi, who I'm texting daily, almost hourly at this point, is in Rafah right now. He's doing surgeries that he's never seen before, working on kids' amputees, saving lives. He can't get out of that country. We have a responsibility here as Franklin residents to appeal to your conscience as friends to make this change. Remember, as Martin Luther King said, "It is not the words of our enemies that we will remember, but the silence of our friends." Thank you so much.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Mohammed Turan. I'm a resident of Somerset, live on Nine Sunflower Road. Been mostly a lifelong resident. I got married, moved out of the city, and came back, brought my in-laws with me as well. So, you know, very much invested in Somerset, Franklin as a whole. It's going to be very hard to follow what many of my community members have shared, so I'm not going to look to do that. I think that, you know, they've made their points pretty clearly, but I just wanted to kind of give a personal story here. So I was fourteen when nine eleven happened. My name's Mohammed, I'm white. If I want to go by Mark, or Mike, or Jim, I can. It's very easy for me to kind of blend in and pass along. Personally, professionally, I've always gone by Mohammed. My parents named me that for a reason. I've always stood by that and taken that as an opportunity for me to kind of, you know, lean into that, address that with other people. Sometimes I notice it makes people uncomfortable, like, "Mohammed." I'm like, "Yeah, I know, ask, it's fine." You know, we can go ahead and do that. So it's always been a big part of who I am, and you know, kind of standing for what's right and standing for what I want to do. I can't really hide, based on my name, what my religion is. So when I went to Rutgers, it was kind of a bit of a shock to me, you know, three, four years after nine eleven, when someone told me, "Go back to where I came from," and my reply to him was, "I was born at St. Peter's, do you want to drive me?" So with all that in mind, you know, understanding what that was like, what it felt like being like some of these youth who came up here and said things even more eloquently than I ever could, you know, it kind of, I was trying to think how I could kind of verbalize and share what my thoughts were on this. So I studied economics at Rutgers and, you know, studied as doing a lot of heavy lifting there. But what I learned while I was there was that we don't have a great ability to understand numbers at scale, so very large or very small numbers, because we've heard numbers twenty thousand, ten thousand, fifty thousand, thirty thousand, and this gets thrown around and rounded up and down like we have no context for. So there are a couple of things that I want to point out, just so we can kind of get some context here. Sixty-three women a day are being killed, on average. Thirty-seven a day, on average, are mothers. Mother's Day was three days ago. In that period of time, one hundred and eleven mothers have been killed. Every ten minutes, somebody is wounded or killed. Since we started our meeting, we're looking at, what, seven, seven and a half, we're on our way to the next one. I think it's important to kind of take this, take a look at this, not just at a macro level, but on a micro level as well, and understand what's going on. I've also been fortunate enough, through Sammy's introduction, for the last year and a half, to be volunteering, working closely with the Franklin Food Bank. They do incredible job, and I'm sure, as many Council members know, and, you know, they've focused and focused directly on food insecurity. We see how much that affects our community, where a significant number of people in this community are suffering from food insecurity. That's the next step, that's where we're at right now, where even the survivors and the people who are fortunate enough that if a ceasefire does happen, and hopefully when it happens very soon, starvation will set in. We're in a township where starvation isn't our issue, and we have, I think it's upwards of forty percent of students qualify for reduced lunches and things of that nature. So when you put that into perspective, you just think, okay, what's supposed to happen when aid trucks that are coming in are being vandalized, and, you know, nothing's being done to address that? I'll kind of wrap here. With the Mental Health Awareness Month, I appreciate and applaud that effort that's being done. I think when we think about, you know, okay, what can we do, how does this affect us? We're not the ones directly impacting, you know, what's happening overseas. I completely understand that and can appreciate that. But ultimately, I think it's important to think of your constituents who are affected by this day to day, as you could see. Many of us, this may be our first meeting, if we're that passionate about this, hopefully it's an indication of where we stand and what our thoughts are around this. And again, personally, when the viral video of the day is a good friend of mine, his niece being carried into a hospital, and then her being kind of splayed out there as the doctors try to save her, it's not just an idea, it's not just a thought, it's not just the, "Oh, it's them." That's someone I know, that's someone I play soccer with all the time, that's someone I went to college with, that's someone who's a productive citizen and business owner in the United States of America. It's a real person, and these are real people. We have a strong community here in Franklin, and the mission statement of Franklin Township clearly states that through a democratic process, you evaluate the needs of the public. Hopefully, this is indicative of that. It also talks about valuing and celebrating diversity. Those aren't just words, we want to see that hopefully through our actions. I thank you very much for your time and consideration, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Theodore Chase, 159 Old Georgetown Road. I feel very small with the question that I came to ask tonight, after listening to all of the previous speakers, and I really support what they have to say and ask that our council take a position and call for a ceasefire. We hope that all over the country, township councils will do this. Unfortunately, the one man who is essentially necessary to a ceasefire shows no signs of accepting one. But the question I came to ask, and I promised someone I would ask this, so that's why I've come, which is what's happening with the garden at Ammon Williams Park? This was a young lady named Sharonda Allen that I met with last fall. I'm involved as one of the founders of that garden from the Environmental Commission thirteen years ago or so. And I understand that there is a group associated with the First Baptist Church in some way or... Anyway, I hope Mr. Vornlock can explain to me, you know, who's in charge and are they doing anything? And this young lady, Sharonda Allen, would like to participate if possible, if I could put her in touch with them, because that garden originally was very important to a lot of people. I think some of them have passed on, and some of them are perhaps too old and infirm now to garden, and that's why it's fallen into a bad state, and we'd like to see it resurrected and be a resource for the people of the community around it. But again, that's a very small question compared to what everyone else here has been talking about. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Zafar Mahmud, 269 Bennett's Lane, Somerset. I've been a Franklin Township resident for thirty-seven years. I'm here to speak about the humanitarian crisis in Gaza and how that is affecting the community here in Franklin Township. I know the town council considered a few months ago about passing a resolution calling for a ceasefire, but decided it was not in our lane. I asked the town council to reconsider that since the unfolding crisis, the imminent famine, and the huge death toll, mostly of women and children, is affecting our relationships with our friends and neighbors right here in our community. I'll speak from personal experience. A close friend of mine, who happens to be Jewish, and I'm Muslim, had several differences of opinion regarding the causes and solutions for the war, and of that it jeopardized our relationship. His friend recommended that we both read a book about two fathers in Jerusalem, one an Israeli Jew and the other a Palestinian Muslim, both of whom lost a young child due to the ongoing hostilities over some years ago. And they decided to form a group called the Combatants for Peace and look for ways to live together peacefully. This book is based on a true story. We both recently finished reading the book and met to discuss and realize that there are always two sides to a story. We are also now able to discuss the Israeli-Palestinian conflict more objectively, with less emotion, and empathize with each other. This book is called "A Pierogon" by Colin McCann, and I highly recommend it to all of you to read, because it's a personal story of these two people. I asked the town council to follow the lead of the Franklin Interfaith Council and adopt a resolution similar to theirs, calling for an immediate and permanent end to the hostilities and the release of all innocent hostages and prisoners on both sides. Franklin Township is a tolerant, diverse community, and it is important for us to make a statement that we will not stand idly by and allow this humanitarian disaster to continue, but that we stand for peace and justice and want to be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Good evening, esteemed Mayor and Council members. My name is Afnan Althaf, residing at 34 Margaret Drive. See my neighbor, Dr. Alex, right here. Thank you for having me, and I will try to do this topic as much justice as I can. I also thank my esteemed colleagues that spoke before me, they've done a much better job than I can, so I... But I will try to provide something anecdotal, and I think that something anecdotal tends to help understand and get the bigger picture for us, right? So... And the reason for this is because I, along with my neighbors in Somerset, are asking our leadership to acknowledge the harrowing tragedy unfolding two hundred days onwards in Gaza. On September of 2023, so before October seventh, a childhood friend of mine was visiting Jerusalem and the West Bank to show his son, his six-year-old son, his ancestral homeland. It was the first time that he was going there. My friend, he recalls hours of lines for the Christian and Muslim Palestinians in order to cross into their respective towns. But what struck, stuck out for me most in this, in my friend's anecdote, is an account for when his son and him, they were at a playground in the West Bank. And this playground, it overlooked a garrison where young Israeli soldiers were overlooking this particular playground. My friend ignored it, and he was just watching his son play, and he saw the light on his son's face, saw his happiness, felt that tranquility that, "I'm in my motherland." And then he felt the utmost panic that any of us would feel, because what he saw next was a red dot laser pointed at his six-year-old son's beautiful face. He darted as fast as he could, like a marathon runner, to go shield his son. And his relatives stopped him, they said, "No, no, no, this is normal. Israeli soldiers, they always do this to our kids so that they can play with our mind." And I think that we're all probably thinking the same thing at this moment. This is not normal. For the first time in history, the whole world, including us in Franklin Township, have a front row seat to what is going on in Palestine and the occupied territories via social media. We daily see the forced famine that is being imposed upon the people of Gaza. We see the weaning child with no milk, the limbless orphans, the fathers with broken dreams as their families are buried under the rubble, or worse, assumed dead, thus never getting true closure. And on the heels of awareness of mental health, as we've been discussing and has been the theme throughout this evening, I must say frankly, we're all exhausted, we're all spent, but we can't turn away. We're living at a time where genocide is happening, and we cannot take a backseat. However, this does impact our mental health, all of us, and we feel as if our hands are tied by the rope of white supremacy, which has emboldened such actions. Imagine being a child, whether Muslim or Jewish or any other faith, in our township who sees this horror day in and day out and sympathizes with the plight of the Palestinians. And imagine how helpless they feel, perceiving that they cannot change any of what's going on. Imagine being a Palestinian child in our township, hearing the words from Nikki Haley, singing "Flatten Gaza" by Lindsey Graham, endorsing to drop an atomic bomb on Gaza, similar to Hiroshima. And he didn't say that once, he said that twice. How can we go forward in our small township? How can we look at our children in their eyes, knowing we stayed quiet? How can we validate the feelings of the children alienated by our politicians' words? How will history and our future generations judge us, knowing that we were quiet? So, my compatriots and I, we request a resolution in our little township, calling for a ceasefire and an end to the genocide. It's the least that we can do. Then maybe we can look at our children in the eyes, our neighbors in the eyes, and know what little we could do, we did. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, esteemed Council members, and Franklin community. My name is Aisha Ali. I am a resident of Franklin Township for three years. I have two children that attend Thomas Edison Energy Smart Charter School, and I also serve on the PTO Board. It is May, Mental Health Awareness Month, and there hasn't been a time in my life that I've felt so unwell mentally, as I have now in these past few months. Yes, it is due to the war raging in the Middle East. Despite the thousands of miles between us and the conflict, this conflict is very close to home and is impacting us right here in Franklin Township. You may argue and say that this war is like any other we have seen or experienced in the past, however, I can easily say that is not the case. We now live in a world where technology has linked us to every corner of the globe, and the experience of others are right at our fingertips and in real time. As a result, we are very aware of the situation that is unfolding thousands of miles away. We are seeing, hearing, and feeling, day in and day out, the wickedness of war that has fallen upon the people on both sides of the conflict. The most disturbing are those of the children, chopped under rubble, broken bones, burned faces, and most critically, barely any place at all where these injured children can receive care and treatment. We see images of children undergoing amputations without anesthesia, babies dying of dehydration. We see orphaned children wandering without water, food, or even a place to sleep. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. There are more details that cannot even be shared on this platform, as they are too disturbing. And so, day in and day out, month after month, this has weighed heavily on my mind. It has incapacitated my ability to do my daily work without being interrupted constantly by a story I just heard or an image I've seen that keeps swimming and resurfacing in my head. It has caused me sleepless nights, loss of interest in the things I do daily, and has caused me to start reaching to the back of my medicine cabinet for those leftover painkiller medication that may help me temporarily forget. It's a slippery slope, and I know I'm not alone in this. Therefore, I say and I urge the township, please adopt the ceasefire resolution here in Franklin. It is critical to alleviating the diseases of the heart that come with war and conflict: depression, distrust, helplessness, anger, and polarization from each other within our communities, all consequences of war. And staying silent is no longer a wise approach. All for a ceasefire, there's nothing controversial about it. There is no risk to anyone when you call to lay down all arms. It gives us pause, it gives us a chance to think, and most importantly, to heal. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Zahra Gori, and I am in fourth grade. Even though I may be young, my age is nothing compared to those who are suffering in Gaza. Every day, I wake up, eat breakfast, and then go to school. I come home, eat lunch, and continue on with my day. However, every step of the way, the only thing I can think about is how lucky I am to do all these things. A countless number of people in Gaza, ranging from newborn babies to grandparents, do not have the opportunity to eat a warm meal when they please, to sleep on a comfy bed without the sounds of missiles erupting right outside their broken buildings, to get a glass of water to nourish their throat when they're thirsty, nor do they know if they will be able to live to see another day. Still, there is one thing that sets us apart, and that is their character. The amount of resilience, bravery, and hope that the people of Gaza possess is something that we can only wish for. That is why, if we can't go there and stop this ourselves, we can fight from here, one step at a time. The first step we should be taking is showing our support of a ceasefire in Gaza. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? I have a motion to end public session.
Mr. Mayor, seeing no one else come forward, I make a motion to close public session.
Okay. Move in second in all, in favor of closing public session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, public session is closed. Well, the... I'll skip to... I won't do things in order. I will handle the war in the Middle East issue first. Another council members who want to weigh in should weigh in. What I, I think I can speak for all of us that we all grieve what is happening in the Middle East. It is painful to watch. I'll speak for myself now. Personally, I often cannot watch the news. Full disclosure, I'm American, I am a Jew, I am a Zionist. But I want to thank you for coming. I'm moved by what you say, and I don't disagree with most of what you've said. I respect you for being here, and I admire the courage of those of you who were Kaffiyi, excuse my pronunciation, and the Jobs. How do I pronounce it? Kaffiyah. Thank you. When I took office, I stood right there at that podium, and I took an oath, administered by that clerk. And I also took an oath to myself that I will not expand the powers and the reach of my office. I've seen that in other council people, other mayors, legislators, and I've seen presidents do that, too. I am no friend of Lindsey Graham, or the things, most of the things he said. I take it as something that is sometimes painful to do, and it's painful that this time, to, as someone quoted me, stay in my lane. I think what you are doing here tonight is righteous. I absolutely respect you for it. But just as, I don't care what Jerry Seinfeld says. I actually don't even know what side he's on on this. I know he was speaking about it, and I said to myself, why do I care what a comedian is saying? The world doesn't care what a mayor in New Jersey is saying. It's not, it is not my lane. When we have something about warehouses, taxes, water, road paving. I have an expert there, sometimes I have an expert here. I have other experts around the building advising me. I don't have an expert advising me on world affairs. I don't know world affairs, and I don't think it is in my lane. It is painful to say this. You have given me hours and hours that I will be thinking about this. I will be calling my, I will be calling clergy in town to see what we can do to close the rift. But I don't know, you seem to think that calling for a ceasefire, no one will disagree. People will disagree. The gentleman who slammed the hood of the car will disagree. And if the person is acting that way now, how will we act when I, after I, if I were to call for a ceasefire? People will be angry about this. I don't know that I would be doing good for the town by calling for a ceasefire. I don't think it is appropriate for this council to do that. Any other council members want to weigh in? Karazi?
Yeah, well, I certainly condemn violence and injustice everywhere. I pray every day for peace all over the world. This is affecting me. Everything that is going on in the world today, as it's been said, has been affecting me mentally as well. It bothers me what's going on in the world today. And I just want to be able to say that I do pray for peace, and I pray for unity, again, in the world, everywhere in the world, today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Karazi.
As someone who has lived here for 37 years, and at least 30 years of that promoted unity and mutual respect, as someone who, as the past president of Interfaith Council, has stated often that we are either brothers in faith or equal in humanity, and as someone who sees wars and conflicts as the weakness of the human beings, and believes that we have been created for a higher purpose than hating each other or causing war, definitely I wanted to see the end to the war. I pray every day that the war in Gaza will end, and Palestinians and Israelis live in peace next to each other or together. I want to really convey my sincere sympathy to the losses of Mrs. Sami Shabban, his last 35 member of his family. And they lost so tragically because they caught up in circumstances beyond their control. And we hope that what we do little, it may be, at least eases a little bit the weight of the headaches that you go through. Dr. Mahmoud, your personal story was very touching, that you were able to save your friendship by educating both of you, and hopefully that will be a good example for all of us. Especially, I know there are some people in the Jewish community that they do not want a ceasefire. They want this war to continue for their reasons. But I think it's time for us to come out of our comfort zone, share our emotion with each other, see the pain that war overseas is causing among our community. We're not going to be having a policy dictate what happens there. But whatever we say in the council is basically to help our local community to be united, to heal the wounds, and be together. Reverend Redd, thank you so much for your words of wisdom. Thank you for sharing the press release. I might add that Frank Cantagio of Interfaith Council, under the leadership of Reverend Redd, Rabbi Garfinkel, who is a Jewish and he is Zionist, Imam Rezvan Rizvi, as well as Pastor George, who are the three vice presidents, and others, including a representative from the Sikh community, they put together that press release. That is, by itself, is a testament that we are a loving, peace-loving community. We wanted to have peace. We don't want to have wars. So I hope the council will provide other means to heal the wounds. And Mayor suggested that he likes to talk to clergy and others to see what it can be done to make sure that you get the message that we're not looking for continuation of the war. We want this war to end. We want people to live in peace, and we want everybody in this township go home and feel that the council people supports the peace, supports ending of the war. And so, I live in that, and I hope that we will do something after listening to you, after listening to other people that may not be here, but more importantly, give you the peace aligned that we truly believe in peaceful coexistence, not only among the people here, but everywhere in the world. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, mayor, I would like to see. So I echo everything Councilman Karazi mentioned, Councilman Kimberly, Franza, and Mayor. Don't think I can stay here and say we are about the violence. Stop the violence is definitely in our heart. Praying for world peace. I was just blessed to celebrate Mother's Day with my two kids. So it breaks my heart to see that there are family members in Franklin that... It just breaks my heart to see what's going on. And Brother Sami Shabban, I don't think I can say anything about your 35 members that you lost. I don't think any of us can. It's very heartbreaking. Our interfaith president, thank you so much for your words. I think it's very meaningful to see that we have a group of interfaith leaders in town that wants to keep us united, that does not want to divide us. And we continue to do the same. We do not want to see our families, our residents divided. We are stronger together, as Reverend said. Unity is something we must do. We must maintain our unity. We have our kids in schools. We need to protect them. And we need to be an example for them as well. So I really appreciate everyone that's coming out here today. We have to heal. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, mayor. So first of all, let me thank all the brothers and sisters who came and spoke about what's going on in the Middle East. Several years ago, I had, you know, I visited Jordan and Israel and Egypt. And I personally, I traveled from Jordan to Israel, and they took us all in one bus. And then there was another bus waiting there. And I asked our tour guide, what is that bus? Why are not people from there coming into our bus to cross the bridge to get into Israel? And you know who they are, right? So I felt really bad because our brothers and sisters there are treated differently, like the African-American blacks were treated here, you know, in the olden days. So the discrimination that goes on there, I witnessed it firsthand because a lot of our brothers and sisters work in Israel, cross the bridge, and go back to their homes on the other side. So I met with a group of residents, our fellow Franklin residents, a week ago. And I heard their cry for help, cry for support. And I stand with peace and peace-loving people everywhere. The world is full of conflicts. It's, the Middle East conflict is one. We have Ukraine and Russia, another conflict that has been going on. There's no easy solution answer to these conflicts. But I hear you, I'm with you. We want to do everything we can to make you all part of our community. We are one family. We will do everything we can to get the message out. And hopefully, we will discuss more about this, like my fellow councilmen said here. And stay tuned, and we will try to address your concerns. Thank you.
Mayor? Yes. I wish some people had stayed around. I can understand they may want to leave, have left. But anyway, I didn't rehearse anything. But I sit here, and my stomach gets ill hearing what I've heard. Obviously, I've heard and familiar with it, but when you see it up close and you hear the words, the confusion, the pain, the upset, the agony, it's heartbreaking to me. I don't suggest I have any answers, but what I would like to say is, I, and I think everybody up here, would like to see this darn war end yesterday. What words you use and how you spell it out in paragraphs in a resolution, I'm not saying it doesn't matter, but at the end of the day, we just want the darn thing to end. A lasting peace, if there could be such a thing in the Middle East. But how? I don't know how. I've heard words about leading by example locally. And it made me think, and this is just off the top of my head, so please, if it comes out a little unpolished, forgive me. I'm not saying we can never do any resolution, calling for the end of wars everywhere, especially the Middle East, which obviously is the epic center of all things terrible in this world. But I'd like to think that if we're looking at a lasting peace there, and as importantly, maybe more importantly, from what I'm hearing tonight, a harmonious, accepting of each other love that festers here, we should stand up. All I could think of is maybe our interfaith committee, our human relations, whatever aspect of our school. Let's have a giant open forum in our school auditorium or our community center. Let's talk about the history of how we got to this unfortunate place with the lack of peace in the Middle East and this, these crises which are getting worse every day. Let's try to hear what each other is saying. Let's try to understand it. Let's try to understand how we could get along better here because if we're setting an example, we can set all examples we want up here, but it's the people that ultimately control the feeling and the vibe, and whether or not people are going to get along and feel intimidated or not feel intimidated, or look over their back at their neighbor or not look over their back at their neighbor. We could pass all the resolutions we want, but if we don't have that energy and that synergy, and I don't know, but maybe the biggest auditorium and town hall conversation that could be had. And it's not that we don't want to be there, but like the mayor said, we don't sit, we're not experts on war. Some of us know the history of how this, the Middle East has gone, but maybe there could be scholars, maybe there could be people from different organizations, both all sides of the conflict. So I don't know what the answer is. I'd like the word "end yesterday." Maybe as a community, we can, we can set an example here by having a dialogue, perhaps not seen in this state, or maybe not even in this country. And I think we have the energy here to do that in a peaceful way. So I'm sorry if my thoughts rattled on, but that's, I just heard what I heard, and this is, I'm just telling you what I feel in this moment. So, anyway, thank you, obviously, an ongoing issue. Yes, Mr. Councilman Orichaka.
The situation in Middle... Yeah. Okay. The situation in Middle East, very, very pathetic. Has never been easy. Follow the history and what is going on there. What we're looking for, or what I think is the best, is to have a permanent peace. What is going on now, lead to a permanent peace. Pray that one day, this peace will reign in that zone, back to the whole world. Pray for peace, entire region. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, Mr. Fornlocker, there were other questions you...
Sure. In reference to idling, whether it be on Hill, Lake, Spring, or any other street in the town, I have urged residents that when they see that type of activity, that they should contact the police department. Ms. Peterson has indicated that she has. I checked with the police department records, and there has been one complaint anonymously of idling in that particular neighborhood. It was made on February 2nd, and when the police officer checked the area, there was no vehicle found idling. In reference to the oil being drained into the storm sewer, there was a complaint made to the DEP earlier this month. It was investigated by our police department, and no vehicles were found to be draining oil into our catch basins. But again, I encourage anyone who sees vehicles idling in excess of three minutes, which is the limit allowed by the law, that they should contact the police department. As far as hiring an enforcement officer, New Jersey state law only allows for the enforcement of the idling law by either a health inspector, a New Jersey DEP inspector, a US EPA inspector, or a police officer. In reference to the questions on the community garden, as I think I reported at the last council meeting, the community garden is currently undergoing renovations. Those renovations are about halfway complete. That was after the community garden had gone, become overgrown after a lack of use for approximately four years. Through our work with Fisk and Mr. Shaban and his group, which I guess is my group because we are part of the same group, we have recruited Community Baptist Church here on DeMott Lane. They have assigned a community garden manager, and they have agreed to volunteer and come in and help the residents maintain those garden plots. We will have 48 of them that are four by eight in size and with ADA-compatible gardens as well as pathways. The Public Works Department, like I said, is about halfway done rebuilding all of them because they had to remove everything because it had gotten rotten and overgrown. And there's also a nonprofit that's working with Wendy White and the Youth Center, not only for possible assistance in the community garden, but also the planting of trees in Neyman Williams Park and the planting of trees at the Youth Center. They're going to plant them, and we're going to buy them. And then they're working with Tower Canyon. Tower is also working with Wendy White from the Youth Center and Community Baptist Church on the community garden. So we're going to try to get the kids from the Youth Center involved in the community garden and the kids involved in the planting of the trees. And also, they were, the nonprofit has agreed to plant flowers and beautification project for the Youth Center, along with the trees there and the trees in the park, which was part of the study that was done several years ago that called for additional plantings. I think that was all of the questions I needed to answer, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Council comments? Mr. Wright?
Mr. Mayor, just one comment. When I was sworn in, I had the wife, it was wife and the crew. I had the wife and the crew held the Bible. I was sworn in. The next one, I think it was the Catholic priest from St. Matthias. I believe he was here, but I'm not sure who he was here for. But he held the Bible. I got sworn in on that one. The next one, you mentioned Rabbi Garfunkel, was his last name? What was his name?
Rabbi Garfunkel.
He was hanging around here. I don't know what he was here for. We might have been doing some food out there, some, I don't know. But I used his, he had the Bible because there was no holy book. And he held the Bible. I got sworn in. No big deal. The wife couldn't come the next time, I believe, so it was my son. He did, you know, he held the Bible. I got sworn in. But here's the good part. There was your mom sitting right there in the corner, all by himself. I don't know why he was here. Didn't care. He was over in the corner. And I said, "Brother, come on. I need your help. Come on, come on." "Well, what do you need my help for?" I said, "Don't worry about it. Come on." I said, "You got the holy book, the Torah," I mean, the Quran? And he said, "Yeah." I said, "Okay, bring that with you." And he said something real cute. "I always bring it with me, just in case I have to drop a nugget somewhere." Now, for all of you that don't know what a nugget is, it's some enlightenment, okay? It's something that you can think about, go home and chew on. So, you know, we went on over there, and our township clerk, she, you know, she did her thing and sworn in. It was no big deal. We walked back, and he said something real cute. He said, "You know, people are going to hate you for that." "What are you talking about?" "Well, they're going to think you're Islamic. They're going to look at you and think you're Muslim." And I says, "Well, I'm not worried about it. Who cares?" But it was the way he said it that I didn't think about it, because there was no need to think about it. But now, through that course of time, maybe you should think about it. Now, I told him, "I'm not part of your faith. I'm not Catholic. I'm not anything. I believe in what they call the supreme being." And I said, "In the supreme being, all these religions get lumped up into one because you believe in something greater than yourself." And that's what I believe in, whether it's Mohammed here and Jesus here, but not with the Jews over there. And everybody's got somebody in the book. Am I right or am I wrong? Everybody's got somebody in the book that somehow or another fit. So I said, "You know what? Believe in a supreme being, somebody greater than myself. Worship, and if you do good, maybe they'll give that blessing to you." And I believe in the blessing. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. You know, just live in the light of whatever you believe in, because in the end, when you go to meet your Maker, no matter if it's Allah, God, Jesus Christ, whoever, you still got to pay the price. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. I actually remember you swimming in on the Quran, and I was impressed by that. Councilwoman Nudine?
And thank, thank you. And it will be on TV, so people, if interested, can watch it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Officially, you're out of order, but thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing that I wanted to talk about, so I did have a small group of residents meet with me to discuss some of upcoming brainstorming session. I call it "Connect with Councilmen." We have a group of about 15 residents that met with me. We went for dinner, so we had pizza, and discussed some things that were bothering them in town. There's a list of items that, Mr. Vorlacher, I will connect with you on. And it was good to hear from residents, and I think it's important that each of, like, residents should know who their councilmember, members are and not hesitate to reach out because it's important that those thoughts, the concerns, issues are brought up to us so that we can take a look at it and see what we can do from our end. So there's a couple of things that I still have to go through minutes of what we discussed. But it was very good to see the continuation of "Connect with Councilmen," and we will continue doing that throughout this year. So you'll see me in Word Two visibly meeting with the residents. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bestinella?
Thank you, Mayor. And I thank Sammy for clarifying that, because I know how important this is to, I'm sure, everyone who came here tonight, supported others speaking or spoke themselves. And I appreciate their, they're coming here. I really do. Couple other issues, and things going on in town here that are important. I'm holding this up here. I don't know if the camera could get it all without reading the whole thing. Basically, next Monday, the 20th of May, we will be having a town hall style, probably, hopefully casual and productive, a town hall style meeting where Manager Vorlacher was enough to get some key senior staff together and address the ongoing safety and maintenance issues on Eastern Avenue. A lot of them are being addressed with big, long-term studies and projects, but there's a handful of things that I believe and a group of residents is hopeful that the town and county can come together on and make some improvements in the short term, low-hanging fruit, how we refer to it, and get some things done while waiting for the more monumental improvements. And please come, if you have any interest. I'm sure most everyone here in town has driven on Eastern Avenue at some point, and even if you haven't, please, you're welcome to be part of the discussion. The other thing I wanted to mention, I know they're not here now. I believe she left, but I just want to applaud the courage of, and the words of the speaker who came up and spoke about mental health issues and the stigma. Thirteen years ago, well, I could say my first friend in life, I went to kindergarten with at Pine Grove School, committed suicide. And perhaps if it was a different world with the type of support mechanisms and lack of stigma, that could have been avoided. So I'm sure we've all been touched some way by similar situations. So I just want to applaud that person who left because I can only imagine the courage it took to say what she did. And I'm glad we were able to help her. I'm not going to comment more on the subject matter that was spoken about. Obviously, very sensitive and upsetting to a lot of people. I agree with most, most all of what my colleagues said, and I don't know if my idea or any version of it or anyone else's idea could actually turn into something, but I really do believe that an ongoing dialogue and discussion is more effective in the short term and long term than resolutions of sort. I'm not totally against a resolution, but I think we all want this war to end. But even if it does end, or not even if it does end, when it does end, as important as that is, if we don't come together a little more understanding and tolerant of people's opinions and backgrounds, God only knows, it's just going to happen again somewhere sometime. So I don't want to keep talking about that, but if anyone has any ideas how there could be a forum that creates dialogue and healing, I'm open to supporting it any way I can. Mr. Vorlacher addressed most of the other issues. I'm not going to go into it for the sake of time. We had a very constructive, in-depth Public Works meeting. Nothing that I can't wait till the next meeting to read out on. Lots of infrastructure projects going on. But I think, I think that's, I think I've said everything I need to. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Francois?
I've been asked on behalf of my fellow councilmen to make an announcement since he forgot. There's going to be a Juneteenth parade on June 15th from 12 to 5:00. The parade starts at Highland Avenue, goes all the way down Hamilton Street, and makes a left turn on Matilda Avenue. It'll be in Neyman Williams Park from 12 to 5:00. Everybody is welcome to attend. Did I do that right?
Don't use the fire trucks.
Why don't you?
I see the mayor's head shaking.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I think she missed it because we have floats, we have fire trucks, we have vendors, we have food, we have a guest speaker, and I don't have the fly here with me. But we have music, a bouncy council for the kids, all kind of good stuff for you to have a family day in the park. And if you bring your own food, don't forget to feed me. That's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Embarrassan?
Thank you, Mayor. So a very brief report. We had the monthly Sowage Authority Board Meeting on the 7th, followed by the Historic Preservation Council Committee Meeting. Very, very long agenda that day, but the chairman handled it very well. At the end of the meeting, he announced that he's moving to a neighboring town, so we would have to get ready to find a new chairman for the Historic Preservation Committee. Very quickly, on the 10th last weekend, participated, not participated, attended the Police Unity Tour here in our complex. A lot of cops out from all over the country participated in the bike ride. It happens every year. Great to see our men, our folks join the parade. And then, over the weekend, on Sunday, the Nepalese Heritage Month was celebrated at the Buddhist temple in Franklin Park on Route 27. Our newspaper, Bill Bowman and PJ Parker, came by, provided some coverage. They also celebrated Buddha, Buddha's birthday, which happens to be on the 15th of this month. Many of you know that, you know, Buddhism is widely practiced in Asian countries, including Nepal, so that was a good event. If you haven't visited the Buddha temple there, Buddhist vihar on Route 27, make a point to check it out, go check it out. It's really a peaceful place. They have a peace garden. They have a large Buddha statue. It's a place to sit and just reflect on what else is, what are all going on in the world. Anyway, also, this May, month of May is also the AAPI Heritage Month, which is Asian, American, Pacific Indian that live in the United States. We celebrate this month as the Heritage Month. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman O'Neechaka?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if some of us have noticed that around Franklin Park, all the major roads around that area are under construction, and they're creating a very big traffic problem. Between Route 27 and then on the outside, we have two constructions going on there. And one, one going on the bridge, and it's a quarter-lu. So it creates a very big problem mainly in the morning and around the afternoon. So I don't know if there's any way they can schedule the construction around that area. We can have a free movement, and it's affecting a lot of people in my world, talking about the traffic. That's why I want to bring it up to our township manager. If there's any way they can work this out there so that we can have a relief of life.
Unfortunately, no. The issue is there's a bridge out on Quarterlu Lane that requires replacement, so there's nothing that can be staged about that part of the work. And the Route 27 work is overnight work from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM for paving. The road has to get paved. It's the state contract to pave the road. The road has to get paved. It's the state contract to pave the road. We have no say over when they do it. But I understand that it's an inconvenience. But in the long term, a short period of time inconvenience will lead to a much easier way to travel along Route 27 and also on Coeur d'Alene. That's the only construction that's undergoing right now in that part of town.
There's another one going on very close to Wawa. It's in the cemetery there.
Where?
Opposite, you know, the new one, Wawa store we have over there.
But that's not in our town. On the other side of Route 27, you mean?
Yes, on our side of 27. It's in.
No, that's, that's.
No, no, the other side of it, not on the.
That's the, that's the work that the state is doing on Route 27. Right. Yeah, that's not our work. That's the state's work.
Okay. Okay. Okay, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Karazi.
Thank you, sir.
Is your mic on? Is your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you. The National Trails Day is scheduled for Saturday, June 1st. And a program will be held at Bunker Hill Natural Area this year. And there will be activities from Watershed Group for all ages, including children. So please, if you can, hopefully the weather will be nice, and please participate. I also attended the Advisory Board of Health Committee Meeting. And we had a great speaker, Dr. Ken Finn, who is expert in the area of cannabis. And he was showing us the data, the latest data that they have about the impact of cannabis in the health of the community in Colorado. And at the end of his speech and his presentation, it was asked, what should we, as our township, which is relatively new and has a few stores, cannabis store, should do? And one thing that he suggested, which I think is very important, is that based on his observation and data, there are a lot of younger adults and also children that are having access to the cannabis, and they are ending up in the hospital and so forth. So he suggested that make sure that you tell everybody that is using cannabis, adults, please lock them and be careful not to let children have access to them. So that was advice that I thought that would be worthwhile to share. And that's all I have, Mayor. And by the way, there's no HRC meeting in May because of Memorial Holidays.
So for my comments, speaking of Memorial Day, it will be on, the town was celebrated on Memorial Day, May 27th. And the parade starts at 12:00. The ceremony will be here in front of the township. And it starts at about 1:15. The parade starts at the corner of Demont and New Brunswick. And anyone who has an antique car they'd like to put in the parade should contact me or any other groups that want to march should contact me. And I'll hand you off to Mr. La Court, who is arranging these things. And I just want everyone to know, I will not be there for 14 years. I have missed my family's yearly party. This year, my brother is retiring, so it's a special one. So I want to go to that. I will be back again next year. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I only have one thing to report. Because it is a popular program run by the Police Department, and it has just recently been announced that registration is open. And I know a lot of people are interested in it, and it fills up fast. But the Franklin Township Police Youth Academy sign up is now available on the website. This year's youth academy will be run in July, July 11th and 12th, and then July 15th through the 19th. Orientation is on July 9th. It'll be run from 8:00 till 3:00 o'clock at the middle school for 8th to 12th grade students, and only 30 are accepted. So if you are hearing this and you're in 8th to 12th grade and want to participate, or if you're the parent of an 8th to 12th grader, or grandparent of an 8th to 12th grader, or anyone else who knows an 8th to 12th grader who's interested in law enforcement or might be interested in law enforcement and wants to see, you know, what it is to be a police officer, they do a lot of very interesting things. They meet with the emergency response team. Generally, the state police bring in North Star, the medical and emergency helicopter operated by the state police. So go online to our website, and the link is there for you to register. Deadline is June 10th. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. There's no council discussion items, no minutes submitted for approval, approval of the warrants in the amount of $19,231,695.61 on May 14th are presented to the Township Council for payment. Do we have a motion on the warrants?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved in, seconded. Anyone have a comment? Anyone like to pull a warrant? Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Barris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine. Councilman Vasinella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Calendar year 2024, we're on item number 13. Calendar year 2024 municipal budget, budget handling and adoption. Resolution 24170Y. Authorized to read the calendar year 2024 municipal budget by title only is presented to the Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion on that item?
So moved then. Seconded.
Moved in, seconded. Any discussion? Clerk?
Councilwoman Barris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine. Councilman Vasinella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Every year, I worry you guys are going to gang up against me and make me read the whole budget. That'd be too painful for you.
We'll wait till, when you least expect it, Mayor.
Okay, now it's appropriate for a public hearing for calendar year 2024 municipal budget as introduced. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Moved in, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Anyone wishing to speak?
Mayor, seeing no one looking to come forward to speak, I'll motion close a public portion of the hearing on the budget. Seconded.
Moved in, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And now would be the usual time we would pass the budget. However, DCA, the.
Would you have anything to explain it?
No.
Department of Community Affairs.
The Department of Community Affairs.
Thank you. The Department of Community Affairs, once every three years, reviews our budget. And they have one person doing that to review a third of the state's budgets. And they haven't gotten to us yet. So we can't pass our budget. That's why in the consent agenda, there is yet another resolution for a temporary budget. May 14th, and we don't have our budget approved yet. That's, all right, no comment.
No comment.
Public hearing and adoption and second readings. We have first readings to announce that we are considering an ordinance, second readings to vote on the ordinance, second reading, Ordinance 4436-24, an ordinance amending the Code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly, Chapter 121, land development to rezone lots along Supra Court from the R3 zone to the R10A zone, consistent with its current development, is presented for a public hearing and final adoption. And public hearing has been noted as required. Do we have motions open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're open to public hearing. Mr. Chase, Dr. Chase, Professor Chase, Councilman Chase is stirring.
I really stayed around for the anti-idling ordinance, but I just, I remember how this Supra Court situation came about. That area was originally supposed to be a recreation field. And then subsequently, the developer put the recreation field over on the other side of the Princeton Islands development. And I guess the planning board agreed to let him go ahead and put houses on Supra Court. But nobody thought to change the zoning at the time. So now you get to change the zoning, and the people who live there can rest easy.
Motion to close public session. For those watching, Mr. Chase and the Franklin reporter are the only ones in the audience.
Mayor, seeing no one else can follow, a motion close the public portion. Seconded.
In seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Public session is closed. Motion to adopt. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Seconded.
And seconded. Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Barris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine. Councilman Vasinella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Ordinance 4439-24, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly, Chapter 384, Water, Section 384-12, Quarterly Consumption Charges, 384-18, Fire Line Service Charges, and 384-20 Meter Charges, is presented to the Township Council for adoption. Public hearing has been noted as required. Do we have a motion to open to the public?
So moved. Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public.
Anyone here from the public can make a motion to close? Seconded.
Mr. Chase, do you have anything to say? He pointed out that he is not on water service. All in favor of closing public portions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Motion to adopt.
So moved. Seconded.
And seconded. As has been stated before, the water rates will make the typical resident on water service pay an additional $69 a year and additional $16 a year for meter charges. But then, at the end of 20 years, they won't have to pay for a new meter. Any other comments?
Mayor, just a quick question. If you put it in simple terms for a lot of the people, especially elderly people who usually do the minimum, what would the charge be then for the month? With all the things we're understandably doing? If you have a minimum bill, what would it be going forward, maybe to the manager or not?
It doesn't really work that way because some of the fees are per gallon. So I couldn't really.
So, so almost no one would have the same?
There's no such thing. Yeah, no one would have the same because some of the fees are an amount, and it's not even, not even a penny, but it is an amount per gallon. So depending on how many gallons they use, that fee will differ.
I got you. I understand. Thank you. That's it.
Any other discussion? Clerk?
Councilwoman Barris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine. Councilman Vasinella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Ordinance on introduction in first reading, Ordinance 44, yeah, 4440-24, an ordinance amending the Code of the Township of Franklin County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, more particularly, Chapter 112, Land Development Addressing Anti-IDling Signage. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law and public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, June 11, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved. Seconded.
And seconded. Any discussion? What this, what this is, is putting up signs for anti-idling law. The state law is that you can idle for no more than three minutes with some exceptions. Then you have to shut off your vehicle. And this is about where we're putting signage, Mr. Mayor.
No, you had just said motion to adopt, and you're only on first reading.
No, I'm sorry.
So it's motion to introduce.
Motion to introduce. And for a public hearing on June 11, 2024, at 7:00 p.m., right here. Thank you for the correction.
No problem.
So we have a motion to introduce and a second. Any other discussion?
Other than just quickly acknowledging Mr. Chase in our audience, who, for those who don't know, lives in the southern part of the township and is so committed to these issues, like the one he brought up with the garden and following through on these idling, I just wanted to point out that we're privileged to have somebody that dedicated to this township.
Yes, we are. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Barris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yes.
Councilman Vasinella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
So Ordinance 4442-24, an ordinance accepting sidewalk and utility easement from Executive Drive Investments LLC for premises known as Block 514, part of Lot 34, also known as 490 Elizabeth Avenue. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption on first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law and public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council on June 11.
You skipped an ordinance.
Mayor, Madam Clerk?
Did I do it wrong?
2024 at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers. I did skip an ordinance. We'll go back to that ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you. So is a sidewalk and utility easement on Elizabeth Avenue. Do we have a motion to adopt? A motion to introduce.
You introduce.
Yes. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in, seconded. Any discussion besides the mayor is losing it? Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Barris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Onichaka.
Yes.
Councilman Vasinella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Going back to Ordinance 4441-24, an ordinance to allow three houses to be individually serviced by wells on a temporary basis until public water is available. The foregoing ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption and first reading, posting, and publication in accordance with law and public hearing and final adoption at a meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, June 11, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Do we have a motion to introduce?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved in, seconded. So this is regarding what most people refer to as the rest of property. We don't have the water capacity yet to serve them, or at least entitlement to the water yet. Getting a licensure to be able to give that, how long?
What you want me to do?
Sure.
Okay. So our master permit is not, is expired. And now that we've entered into a new contract with New Jersey American Water, we can make application to the DEP for the renewal of our master permit. That process usually takes about six months. This developer's subdivision had been approved prior to the expiration of the master permit. However, they had not started construction. A workaround for them to begin construction is this ordinance that would exempt those three houses in the subdivision from connecting to our city water until such time as our master permit is renewed by the DEP. master permit is renewed by the DEP.
Any other discussion? Clerk.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman O'Neechaka.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Under the consent agenda, items A through S is listed in the consent agenda portion of the meeting, presented for Township Council for adoption. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda? Seconded. Moved in seconded. Any discussion? Anyone like to pull an item or question an item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois.
Yes.
Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman O'Neechaka.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
We have no items to be voted on separately. All businesses, anyone have a nomination for boards, committees, and commission vacancies? Yes. Man Wright. Microphone.
I sent you the email.
Councilman Wright, your microphone.
Sanal Palakal.
Last he's talking in the public.
Last name. It looks like.
Can you turn on your microphone, please?
Sanal.
Can't you spell it?
P-A-L-A-K-K-A-L.
Palakal. Can you turn.
Recreation Advisory.
Can you turn on your microphone, please, Mr. Wright?
I recommend him for the Recreation Advisory Committee.
Spell his name again. Any other nominations for the same position? Can do it by acclamation. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Congratulations. Any other nominations? There are no other nominations, and there being no executive session, unless you snuck one in on me, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded. In seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Be well, Franklin.